Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen. Meeting of Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Will we all stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the Chairman announcement is the only thing that I have, is I had the pleasure of having the staff in the town hall sing to me this afternoon for my birthday, so I just want to extend the appreciation of their acknowledgement.
Happy birthday.
Thanks. And that wasn't a lead on to get you guys a day happy birthday, but it worked.
That's good.
All right, with that being said, anybody on the board have anything they want to go under announcements? Okay, is there anybody in the audience for anything on the Citizens Forum? Seeing as none, our first agenda item is a notice of appointment of Adam Furno as- Our first agenda item is a notice of appointment for Adam Furno as a Highway Superintendent and possible votes. We all have a memo or a letter in our packet. And pursuant of the Special Act Section 1-2B, the Select Board has 21 days to either disapprove of the appointment before- to either approve or to disapprove of the appointment before it becomes effective. In the alternative, the Board may approve the appointment on the record in a public meeting, so. Don't think, you have anything to add on that, Mr. Administrator?
Not much. For those folks at home, I've had the pleasure of watching Adam Furno develop as a manager. And when I started here, he was splitting time between building facilities and highway as a rank-and-file member of the highway group. And that was a little sketch, so we moved him up to working foreman and made it a true honest-to-God management salary for the level of responsibility that he was engaging with the town. Had to step up during COVID and take on an awful lot of responsibility when everybody above him got sick with the virus. And since John Furno went over to be Chief of the Fire and Ambulance Department, Adam has been Acting Superintendent of Douglas Highway. Chief Furno had in his contract a clause, which was that he was unhappy in the role as Chief. He could waive the remainder of his contract and return to his position as Superintendent of Highway, and it was his prerogative to waive that. In the middle of March, he did correspond with me saying that he was going to waive that portion of his contract. He was going to stay as Chief and was not intending to return to Superintendent, which clears the way to declare the Superintendency vacant. And that being the case, I'm going to promote Adam without further competition. And just people understand, when somebody works in a department for a really long time and achieve that number-two status, the overwhelming presumption is that they're going to make it to the number-one. They just have to make sure they keep their eye on their qualifications and their performance. But that is the odds-on likely outcome of being second-in-command in the department. In this case, I see no reason to deviate from our understanding of performance and expectations. Adam consistently beats all of our expectations for his performance. He wears many, many hats. He never lets a ball drop. He's Johnny on the spot. He lives in town, so whenever something happens in the building, he's here. And has really done a fine job of stepping up to be Acting Superintendent. So there is being no other internal candidate qualified. I just feel comfortable appointing him straight away. The Special Act is written in a very odd way. When the Town Administrator of Douglas points at Department Head, the Select Board has 21 days to disapprove or the appointment automatically becomes effective. You do have the option to vote in favor of the appointment, which I would ask you to do now that you just got this today, so you can wait till your next meeting. But I think it's a gesture to long-serving members of our staff, and you've done it on other occasions, or different Board members have done it in the past, to acknowledge the achievement of that promotion.
Thank you.
The pay will not change. I guess I should add that. So we've been paying Adam as the Superintendent. So he is at the proper grade and step right now, so there won't be any change in the budget.
Where responsibilities has increased, are we going to look to take off some of the other added dual roles that he's had?
Well, that's the goal, right? So with the number-two role now being open in the department, I think we're going to have to have an active conversation. I think we'll start at the end of April with this Board, because it is a policy decision. My recommendation to you is going to be that the number-two role here, that salary be allocated to a Facilities Manager that is useful to the entire town, including the School Department, for building assessment, operations and maintenance, decision-making, and long-term capital planning. As well as seeing to a lot of the day-to-day things. I think it would take a lot off Adam's plate if he didn't have to worry about fuel levels in tanks and broken flywheels in HVAC equipment. Because when he leaves a job that Highway is working on, now they're going to take somebody who might be doing labor and bump them up to be the responsible person on the site while Adam goes off and chases a building issue. We would like this person to be so-called Johnny on the spot, building stuff. That's open to a considerable amount of conversation, and there's both pros and cons. It is good to have a one and a two in every department and have some redundancy. So as I've structured it now, as I conceive of it now, I would leave the position in Highway so that in the event that Adam had a prolonged illness, so I had some other reason to be on leave, that the order of succession would be very clear. And, you know, paying the person what we'd be paying them to be responsible for our buildings, you would think to be a qualified manager with a lot of experience and able to step up and serve in somebody's absence. But I'm open to not doing a completely different model and putting the position back into the building, Facilities Maintenance where it was. I just want to make sure that people understand, I'm not looking for a custodial role. I'm looking for a role that is actually going to step up and build a strategy for the maintenance of our buildings and actually for the dealing with the vacant buildings that we have as well.
Anybody have any questions? Would entertain a motion on approving this appointment?
Make a motion that we appoint or endorse Matt's decision to appoint Adam Furno as the Highway Superintendent.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Matt. Next thing on our agenda is to ratify the contract for the Police Chief, which we've talked and discussed that in an executive session.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to, again, to bring some information to the table. This is the third contract I negotiate with Nick Migliannico to be Chief of Police in Douglas. It was during my tenure that Chief Foley retired and took a job in Wallace in Vermont. And then Lieutenant Migliannico was promoted to Chief. And it was at that time that we completely rewrote the Chief's contract and made it what it is today. So in terms of the language, it's the same two parties. We really didn't make very many language changes at all, because this is our third whack at this document. So most of what's changed here is compensation. The Chief wanted his salary to be calculated in line with the police union in the sense that the educational bonus would be no longer paid out as a stipend or as a bonus. It would be built into the base rate. This is a significant issue in police departments all across Commonwealth. The former so-called Quinn bill in various towns adopted Quinn either in full or partial or rejected it. And Douglas was sort of a partial. The stipend was built into the contract, but it wasn't called Quinn. It was called an educational bonus. So you'll see that the Chief's base pay goes up by the amount of his former bonus for having a master's degree, which was $10,000 plus a staff plus a colon. But that puts him more or less just a little bit behind some recent hires here in the Blackstone Valley. I am of the opinion that some of the recent hires here in the Valley are at rather extraordinary salaries. So I'm appreciative of the Chief not trying to be ahead of them, but trying to stick with them. You know, I realize it's a tough job, but salaries have gotten very high in neighboring communities. I don't know if it's sustainable, actually. With that said, I recommend this contract. As I said, very little has changed since the last time.
Anybody have any questions? Seeing as none, entertain a motion to ratify the Police Chief's contract.
I'll motion to ratify the contract for the Chief of Police to Chief Nick Migliannico.
Motion's-
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm just trying to orchestrate.
Yeah, I was just trying to see what you're doing. Discussion and votes on a collective bargaining agreements for the annual town meeting warrant. First one is the Firefighters Union.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite the Chief and Deputy Chief up to the table. On the management side, we had four members. The Union had their form. And it was a rather quick progress to a conclusion. To summarize in a nutshell, principally, the way we envisioned building the compensation table for this union has been switched. In the past, we always looked at sort of a base rate and base arrangement with firefighters. And their additional credentials were added on, either as a stipend or as a different grade within the comp table. But you were a firefighter first. And we set those salaries to be competitive with firefighter salaries. What has changed in the marketplace is that it is increasingly difficult to recruit and retain emergency medical technicians at the paramedic level. And it's essential to have the requisite number of paramedics in your department so that you can run an advanced life support ambulance, so-called ALS ambulance. So we've took the table and we've basically built it around what is a competitive salary for a paramedic? And then worked the other ranks and grades and steps off that basic model. The result was affordable for the town, but a substantial boost for the more senior members in the Union who have the paramedic credential. And it made them not only competitive with other municipalities, but I think it makes them competitive with private ambulance services, especially if they're working at our overtime rate versus going to work a second job with a private. That was the goal, was to try to disincentivize people working a lot of extra hours outside of their time working for Douglas. It just, you can see some burnout developing because there is a shortage and people are in demand. But we also wanted to be able to recruit people from privates to come work for us. And the call rates are set with the full-time rates. So there had to be movement in the full-time rates to open the door for the call rates to become competitive. I don't want to make overcomplicate it, but that really is, was the math as we were trying to close up here. I think the other major thing that we spoke about the most was changes in just our investment in the wellness of our staff. We've been trying to, well, I'm going to say two things then. Both the training and the wellness of our staff. We've been trying over the years to gradually build up a culture of support for all of our active members to get to the next step. So if they're an EMT basic, to try to become a medic if they have the stomach for it and if they have the desire to spend a lot of time and effort. So we're going to support that through provisions in this contract to support the additional learning. The other piece of it is wellness. I can't help but compliment this Union, you know, it can be very difficult to negotiate wellness provisions with an unwilling collective bargaining unit. The Douglas firefighters have distinguished themselves in having the same commitment as town does in staying in good health, staying in good shape, and being able to perform the necessary functions of their job without endangering themselves. And so there's a fitness incentive that was in the contract from last time. You meet certain performance requirements, you can pass a test, you can get additional money. This time what we've added is a package, or we've made more clear, that the town will support additional testing, both at the baseline level when someone comes to work for us and as they progress over the course of several years. To keep up with cardiac issues, you know, areas where we know that firefighters develop cancers, to have those screening tests done on a regular basis so that we're catching things early. And that would be at the town's expense. It's not covered by insurance, because it's outside the scope of a plan, we're still going to pay for it. And that's a commitment, first of all, it's not a lot of money, but it's a commitment towards the people that work here and put themselves in danger to help other people. At a minimum, we want to send the message that we want to protect their health and their ability to continue to work in their field. So that's, in a nutshell, I will stop there. I know there are other points that-
Yeah, I think you hit on all the heavy points. It was a well-done process. Selectman Smith sat in with us. The Deputy Chief, myself, and Matt. And it was a very back-and-forth civil negotiation. I think we're in a good spot right now.
I know I'm jumping ahead in our agenda, but we've got two different shots for rates. Is it one's a call, one's a full-time, or are they all full-time in these, in the annual town meeting versus what's in this thing?
So in the contract, that would be full-time employees covered by the collective bargaining agreement. The table that's in the warrant is to reestablish the rates for call.
For call firefighters. Good luck explaining that at the meeting.
Well, those are the key distinctions. Those are to make sure people understand that people work all day, every day, and there are people who come to respond to calls.
How are your, excuse me, how are your call numbers?
Well, we have a very solid call department right now that respond back to a lot of stuff. Getting our second ambulance out the door with call members as well. But I don't think we've ever had a strong group as we do right now.
Great.
Anybody have any questions for the Assistant Chief or the Chief? As other requireer votes, so I guess we're good on that. And this is just a process that Ross went through with you guys, correct?
Right, it'll go in the warrant. But because the Finance Committee has no responsibility over this item, I would ask the Select Board to take a vote if you support this contract, to recommend it to town meeting for ratification, because you're the closest to it. Or you can choose not to. You can go in without-
Well, the only reason I would hesitate myself, I haven't read this. So it'd be hard to vote in support of something that I have no idea what's in the paper. I think Selectman Smith's probably the only one that, sitting here, that understands what's in there. So that would be my only hesitancy, I can't.
You can go in without a recommendation. The Finance Committee will have to recommend.
Yeah, three other guys, yeah, if they choose to do it, just myself. I try to be difficult, but if I'm going to vote for something, I need to know what it is I'm voting on.
Would we have to recommend it tonight, or could we wait till next meeting?
No, this has, no, this is, tonight's your drop dead, night to get stuff done. So all Matt is suggesting is the, if you wanted to vote in support of it.
Not exact, so it's got to go in the warrant, Matt.
Yeah.
But when are you going to the pressure with the FinCon choir? Not until after their meeting?
Correct. So I think the ordinance, we're planning to send it off?
Yeah.
So this group won't meet again?
No, no, so tonight's our last, last time to do it. So if you needed to vote on it, but it's not listed that way, that's why.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not been done before, I just-
Yeah, I don't anticipate anything wrong with it, but you support it, okay. What's in it? I don't know what's in it. Oh, why do you support it? No, I don't know. I thought it was the right thing to do. So that's all, that's all where my head's at, so. But we've got three other members here, so if you guys want to do it, you can do it. And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just telling you where my head's at.
I'm thinking similarly, that's why I asked if we could do-
Because I know exactly what's in this one, because I participated in it. But I don't know if these, yep.
The alternative is you could speak on the floor, which gives you a month and a half, a month, five weeks, almost, to understand the document. Still make your own choice as a Board whether you would speak on the floor.
Speak on the floor in what regards?
Town meeting.
I know what the town meeting is, I know the floor is, but you said speak on the floor. For what? To say that I approve it and that I stand behind it? I wouldn't have a problem doing that after I read it.
I think in all fairness, because you haven't gone through it, Maxwell Stane, he hasn't gone through it. To make a motion to go forward with it would overly be fair without support.
We're going to vote to approve the article. I don't think, I see no reason why this want to be included in the warrant, right? But to put a vote on the record that I support it without knowing exactly what it is, I have confidence through the process. I just went through it with the Police Union, and I'm sure over the years, Tim's been through the process as well. So at some point, you will do. I have no doubt that it was done properly, but I haven't read it, so that's just where my head's at.
Would we make a motion to put it on to the warrant?
We're going to do that after anyways, that's a different item, so. Just as this particular line item, the Town Administrator just suggested that. Maybe we vote on it, so.
So we will meet before a town meeting? Didn't I see that? So let's put it on the agenda for that meeting, and then we can, as a group, indicate to the town. I think if we do that, we do both fire and police.
You'd have to do both and whatever else comes up during the course of this meeting tonight. Could you put that on there, Lisa, please? We have anything else for the two Chiefs?
Oh, Jesus.
Uh-oh. Sorry, Chiefs.
Well, Article 11 and 12 are in the annual town meeting warrant. And they state that they're executed by the fire union in the Board of Selectmen on a date, a specific date. This is being presented to the Finance Committee next week. If those dates are left, they won't be executed by you prior to their voting. So I anticipate that question coming up with the Finance Committee.
So we make a motion to a-
So I don't know if-
Just make this real easy. I have confidence that the process was done properly. And if you need dates for your thing, I would just entertain a motion to accept both the police and the fire collective bargain.
Unless Matt has different wording that can be used, I don't know the answer to the question. I just know what the articles read.
I think we're just going to get to it real quick just by doing it this way. Anybody care to make a motion separately?
I'll make a motion to, you want to do them separate or you want to do them-
Yes, separately.
I'll make a motion to accept the Firefighters Union collective bargaining agreement for the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion's been made, I second. Second. Any further discussion?
I don't want to be a nudge here, but are we accepting it or approving it?
Well-
I think we're approving it for the warrant.
We're accepting it for the town warrant, correct?
Yes, but as Jean has pointed out, at some point before town meeting, you must take a vote. So this is Section 1-2, subsection I. So the Town Administrator's powers include to negotiate on behalf of the Board all personnel contracts and collective bargaining agreements involving any subject within the jurisdiction of the office of the Administrator or Board of Selectmen, including contracts with town employees involving wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment. All such contracts and agreements shall be subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen. So you don't have to vote tonight, but if it's going to go into town meeting warrant for ratification by town meeting to raise and appropriate the funds to support the contract arrangement, you do need to vote.
So you want to vote, and so going back to Tim's question, what do you want, approve, to accept, or approve?
It's April 2nd. Town meeting isn't until May 6th. I would think that if members of the Select Board want more time to cogitate-
I mentally already, I mentally already got over that, so you're trying to talk me into going backwards. You keep going, so. If you just wanted to approve it, I think you have four guys there that are comfortable with that, and we just-
I'm not going to argue with success. I'm not going to snatch.
Approve is your answer. Is that what your motion said? Approve or accept?
I'll make a new motion.
Making a new motion, can you vacate the old motion, please?
Motion to approve the Firefighters Union collective bargaining agreement for the annual town meeting warrant.
Second. Motion's made in second. Any more discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Next time, Kelly, can I come and do the negotiations and skip this part of it?
So execute means sign, so we'll need a signature copy.
Okay, next thing we need to talk about is the Police Union contract. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chiefs.
Nobody from the Police Department's here. And Matt wants to give us a little quick overview if necessary, if not, we can move forward.
Yeah, I think I started to detail what's different this time from last by talking about the incorporation of educational incentives into the table. And a significant movement of the table by 8%. And this was a conversation that reflected comparison with neighboring departments and rival departments that may recruit some of our people. And I think we added a couple of steps in here, I think of the Step 15 level.
And-
Step 25.
25, yeah.
So that's really basically for people who've been with you for a long time. And that's the primary change. So the educational incentives, just so everybody is aware, were really significant dollar amounts. So $10,000 every year for your masters. You build that in, you start to put a colon on it. It's, it will change the rate by quite a bit. So the colon's here, and the out-years, I believe, are 2%, which are very conservative compared to what's going on in the marketplace. But that initial 8% was a catch-up. This is what we've done in the past two police contracts. We've had to catch up. And some of that was done through accreditation bonus, and some of it has been done through just adjustment of the table. But it is very difficult to recruit and retain police officers in the current environment, here in Massachusetts especially. So once again, the door was open for this conversation because of the new group that's coming into the tax base as a result of economic development to the $21.8 million. The Police Department shows a larger increase. So if you go back to your budget document that's in your packet and you compare the compensation line for fire and ambulance, you're going to see there's actually not a lot of net change since fall- you're gonna see there's actually not a lot of net change since fall town meeting. And that is because the primary increase in the fire and ambulance department was something that town meeting already approved back in November by adding 70 hours a week of per diem time, so we could staff the ambulance with medics. And we budgeted that timeframe at the medic step five rate of pay, because we felt we would be getting experienced medics from other fire departments picking up part-time here, and we would have to pay them a rate comparison to their pay rate as a lieutenant or as an experienced medic in another town, as a career firefighter. So, that's already built in. So, if you wanna see the change, you would go back and compare the fall town meeting rates for fiscal '24 to the fiscal '23 compensation levels in the fire department to see where the delta has occurred, where the changes occurred. With police, it's gonna be on the fiscal year. So, where am I, tab 5?
4, sorry.
Tab 4, it's right in the front. This is your FinCom flyer format. I'm looking at public safety on page 2. So, you see, fire wages went up 27, ambulance wages are actually down 26, so it nets out to a very minor change. But, in fiscal '23, there was actually $155,000 difference, you see that? So, now at police, there was very little change from fiscal '24 approved in anything that was approved by fall town meeting thereafter. But, this year, the contract shows a $245,000 increase on the compensation line. That's roughly 8% of that payroll in that department. Now, that is gonna include, just so we all know, not only police, but the dispatchers. Dispatchers' union is also accounted for in the compensation line of the police budget. So, that was also a makeup contract, and this is the first time you see those increases. The chairman said in on this meeting, I think, on these meetings, you know the conversation we had, and what we're up against. So, I'm recommending this to the select board and to town meeting as an important component of building this police department going forward. Now, the other thing, I'd relax not to say this, is we are adding one full-time position to this department. So, there is a school resource officer being added, and that is also budgeted at a patrolman level, so there's 60, so, let's call it $70,000 worth of that 245 is a new person. We did an assessment of our overall security posture at the school campuses, and felt like an additional SRO was very much needed. It was a recommendation of the chief. And so, we are going to promote from within to that position, and then recruit a fresh probationary patrol officer to backfill the slot.
Any, have any questions from Matt on the police union contract?
No, new growth certainly allows us to recognize levels of service in all areas, and they can certainly credit new growth for my lack of agita with the increase. Makes good sense.
I'm gonna assume that the administrator's looking for the similar motion for the police union's contract. If everybody's comfortable moving forward with this one. Not much different than the fire department's.
I'd make a motion that we approve the collective bargaining agreement with the police union.
Motion's been made, I'll second that. We have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is review enclosed annual town meeting warrant and possible votes.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yep.
Grab the floor to talk about the budget, and then let the chips fall where they may on the warrant in your own discussion. We've pretty much put this budget to bed about a week ago, and sent the signal to all the department heads that we know further revisions to the budget. Just so people understand that we, despite the fact that we're, we have these contracts, and despite the fact that we are making an investment this year in both the senior center and the library, and a very large investment in the Douglas Public Schools and Blackstone Valley Tech, that we still have a conservative posture towards revenue in the budget. So, I just said that new growth was about 1.8 million. I'm closing this budget, and this is the only thing I wanna work out with Gene, with a budgeted surplus of $164,000. We also did not include $450,000 of the new revenue in the budget, because we're holding it back in what is called the overlay. And that is basically our reserve account. If the taxpayer were to contest the value of their asset and have their taxes abated, it would be accounted for through the overlay. If the taxpayer does not challenge their value, that revenue comes back. It doesn't come back into the general fund, it includes the free cash. But, that's 450 and 160, I'm doing the math quick in my head, but it sounds like 610. About one-third of the new growth that was created by the warehouse and joining the tax base is not scheduled to be spent. So, I, I'm sensitive to the fact that, yes, some of these budgets are going up. It is based upon the needs presented to us by our department heads, and our ability to meet those needs, really for the first time in a very, very long time. So, well before I started here, when, when Mike Uzinski and the various select boards were trying to balance these budgets for 12 odd years, there was very little resources to work with. And the override was a temporary stay on a point, the budget had reached a point where it was gonna crack, because it wasn't gonna support service levels anymore. By narrow margin, the voters of the town approved an override that was designed to give you a five-year reprieve. Well, we made it last almost seven, and then the economic growth kicked in, and there hasn't been a necessity, and there won't be a necessity, to have any more override votes. Now, I'm gonna knock on wood and say, barring anything that are completely out of our control in terms of pricing in the marketplace for different things, but, on all things held equal, that famous thing that economists say, ceteris paribus, all things held equal to today's conditions, we should be able to continue to balance the budget with a decent amount of new growth every year from economic development and residential home development, and no further additional overrides. That's been the goal from the beginning, that commitment remains. So, even though there is a larger number in the bottom line of this budget than the year before, it reflects the fact that the town has the ability to pay, because of the economic development contributed, a building that accounts for more than 12% of the tax base, all of them here. So, that's a long-winded explanation. I think very few of these numbers have changed since I originally presented them to you, with the exception of Blackstone Valley Tech, that number went up. And we've been factoring in repair costs at a high level at highway, and to some extent at the fire and ambulance department as well. Engineers nowadays design a lot of equipment for what's called planned obsolescence. They used to build a truck, and maybe you could make it last 30 years. If you put it in a garage, do amazingly good care of it. Now, this stuff is designed to fail at the end of the useful life of the asset. And, and you know, because you have shopware components, right? The components are not built to last 20 years, they're built to last for five or six.
If you're lucky.
If you're lucky, and then the cost of repairing them, and replacement parts, is through the roof.
Yep.
So, we've made some adjustments to highway and fire and ambulance to accommodate the fact that we are trying to make our equipment last quite a long time. We're trying to take good care of it, and we also can't buy new stuff to save ourselves. It is, it is insane. And I spent Easter Sunday with a farm family that I grew up with, friends, relatives, and they're in the same boat as municipalities, they can't buy equipment. Certain tractors they can get, but trucks, forget about it, nobody can buy a truck anywhere. So, or the truck that they want. So, that's part of the conservatism that's built into this budget is potentially an overestimation of repair costs. The problem is, we can't just absorb like a major repair, like a broken kingpin or something in a, in a truck, without the money being in the budget. There isn't enough money in the finance committee's reserve fund to accommodate all those repairs. So, they're built into this budget. Are there any other questions about the numbers?
So, is it designed that, where you put excess in the maintenance budget that they'll be turned back on at the end of the year if you don't have the maintenance? Any questions from Matt on what you just talked about?
And there are two police cruisers in this budget, so, two purchases we buy. They're in the operating budget, not.
Next year, a skip year?
No, I don't think so. Next year, two, two. So, one more year, two.
Yeah, then we have a skip year.
That leaves the rest of the warrant.
These, these tables that you have in here on this spreadsheet for the call firefighters, is that part of your budget? Oh, no, that's personnel bylaw, sorry.
So, the rates of pay are voted by town meeting.
Yep.
And you would look in the budget on, again, on page 2. You'd be looking at police and fire wages. In the detailed budget, there is a line item that the department attempts to estimate based on call volume and the rates of pay that are voted by town meeting. So, those wage accounts need to absorb changes in the pay, rates of pay per hour. Does that make sense?
Do we create a position just to do time cuts?
What's that?
Well, no, because the extra duty, so that's on just above arc of 10, so you have to figure out what you're doing to get into extra duty column. You have extra duty applied for the following working schedule shifts on ambulance, firefighters, slash B ranks and above, career officers fill in lieutenant, slash B ranks and above. Scuba divers assigned to D-17, training and incident response.
I'm gonna ask the chief and deputy chief to explain how that one took together.
So, last year, we had found that the comp table for the fire guys, to, to attract our paramedics, for instance, the rate wasn't enough. So, we had to, after speaking with Matt, redo the comp table, and this is what we came up with. On the first chart, the, the rate of pay is really nothing changed for our call people.
Are we under, on nine? Oh.
I don't have what you guys have.
Oh, I don't have what you have, so.
It's Article 9.
Article 9, okay.
At the bottom, call firefighters EMS.
Okay.
Let me grab my glasses.
Oh, it's, it's somewhere. Yeah, it kinda looks like this, it's, it's the same thing as John, for the most part. It's just, it's on a few pages, it's a little bit there.
Okay. So, what we did was, in order to, I'll start with the paramedics. To attract the per diem paramedics, we had to come up with a rate of pay to attract them to come work for us. We have one shift that is out of our three, has a per diem medic working every shift. So, with that group, we have to attract per diems to come and work. So, we have some pretty qualified people working those shifts right now. So, we can use this comp table to, to pay them. Where before, we, I don't know how many times Matt had to come to the board and ask for a special rate of pay, because we couldn't get the, the people in the door. The other chart, the extra duty, is if we have a call member take a full-time shift for 10 or 14 hours, we feel it's fair that they get the rate of pay that we're close to what the full-time people are getting, that's why we came up with that.
Essentially filling the same roles and job responsibilities.
Right, right.
Well, we're just, slow everybody down, give you an example, okay? So, if we fill all the shifts on a shift, we fill all the slots on a shift with full-timers, and they go into an incident, and then call firefighters go to the same incident, call firefighters get the call rate of pay, the full-timers get their negotiated rate of pay from the contract. If we have open slots on a shift that we cannot fill with another full-time member, there is a differential between full-time and call at the same grade. That reflects the responsibilities and commitment of the full-time officer, full-time member versus the part-time. But, if the part-time member goes in and fills that slot and works the entire shift that would have been filled by a full-time member, they get paid what the full-time member would have been paid, because the differential is added back, the 17%. I should stop right there, is there any question about that?
Oh, I understood what you just said. What's his first column?
That's their rate.
That's their, that's their regular rate?
For fiscal '25.
Oh, it's not.
Yeah, it's gotta be, that's what it is.
No, no, no. It doesn't have a header, that's what I was.
No, that's what you get paid. So, if you're a firefighter with no EMT credentials, you've been with the department for three years, you're at step 3, and you are a call member, and you would come to a fire call, you are paid $18.71 an hour. If you are that same person, and you fill a firefighter slot on a full-time shift, you would get the differential, or in 21.89 for that time that you worked.
Yes, okay. So, under extra, extra duty applied for the following, working shifts on ambulance. The captain paramedic, if he's not working on the ambulance, would he get to reduce pay? I'm not following with that.
He's coming in as a call captain, so he's coming in to take, assist at a call, but he's not filling, backfilling like a shift for 10 or 14 hours, working on the ambulance. He would get that first column, his regular call rate. And then say he needs to fill in for a career fire officer that's out, he would then get that extra duty pay. So, if he, if he or she was at step 1, coming in to assist at a call, like a regular call firefighter would, they would get 38.45 an hour. If they had to say cover for one of the career fire officers for a shift, they would get 44.99.
And that's what the career officer gets, is 44.99?
Pretty close to that, it's just under what a career fire officer makes. That's really the reason for the 17%. It brings it to just below what a full-time career member would make.
So, a call person is only for an emergency? If you call them in, that would more or less be a per diem person, position? Is that how, I should be trying to get my head out, because if you're a call person, you call somebody in, right, they're on call.
Right, if the tone goes off, they come to work, they get paid on the first column. Right, if the tone goes off, they come to work, they get paid on the first column.
When the call is over, they go home. They're not, it's not a scheduled shift, it's a, we have an emergency, you need to come in for the emergency. Versus a shift that's scheduled, they would be filling in for a career firefighter that was out on paid time off or out sick or something like that.
And our called staff is the real backbone to help our full-time staff.
Yeah, I'm not disputing any of that.
No, no.
I'm trying to understand the logic behind what you're saying.
Yeah.
So.
So, I mean, we could use the example of our, we had a chimney fire the other night. There was two or three people on duty. They went to that incident, and because that incident requires more than three people to take care of, our call firefighters came in from home and took the rest of the trucks to the call. So, in that case, working under this table, they would get the pay rate that's in this first column. If one of them was filling in on the shift as one of those three members that went to that call, they would get that extra duty because they were doing the fill-in for a full-time person, although they were attending the same call as somebody called in from home. But they continued to stay at the fire station afterwards.
But I also want to explain the per diem piece, because you have ambulance, so instead of hiring a person per shift of full-timers, the budget allows you to have 70 hours a week per diem assistance. So, they will get the rates in the first column if they come in as a medic, if the shift is already full. So, our shifts are not big. We're not one socket, we don't have 40 people on a shift, we have two, right? So, the duty crew is all full, they're here, everybody who's scheduled to work is here, and then the per diem comes in during the hours when we've said we're going to have a per diem, they will get paid in the first column. If, for some reason, for vacation or illness or other reason, the duty crew, the medic on the duty crew isn't going to be at work that day, and now that person who would have been a per diem comes in and fills the slot of the full-timer, they will work the full-timer's shift, which may be a lot longer than the per diem shift, but they'll get paid the rate in the right-hand column. Because that is the minimum that we need to keep the ambulance on the road.
So, I think where my confusion is coming from, I'm going to read through this while you're talking. Working scheduled shifts on ambulance, firefighter, basic ranks and above, right? And career officers fill in lieutenant, basic ranks and above, is that what that B means?
Yes.
Okay. He's a, he's a, a basic fire, he's not going to fill in for a captain or lieutenant. This is only, you could only, a call lieutenant could only fill in for a career lieutenant?
Career fire, yes.
Okay, I'm good. Very confusing.
It is. It's kind of like the tax code, trying to be fair to people adds complexity to the system.
I think that those two things.
The word, it could be a little bit tighter, because it's.
It's a little confusing. I was sitting there, reading it two or three times to get my head around what you were talking about, so.
Yeah, we could change it to fill in scheduled shifts on ambulance. So, the minimum threshold in order to fill a shift, you have to be at least an EMT, and it's usually a fire.
Well, an EMT, but if you only, on your call person, you only had an EMT, they can't fill in for a lieutenant EMT.
Correct.
If it's just a basic. Yeah, I think, just, well, it doesn't matter, because I'm not involved in it, so.
Yeah, we're not trying to make it difficult.
I don't need, I don't need the clarity, but it just, that's where it would get a little confusing. How often does, would something like that happen?
Every single day.
What's that do with very confusing for payroll? Because now you got to figure out, okay, I came in, I was here until 9:30, well, I just got a call, so now I'm going to go over there and I want to work here until whatever time on that call?
No, so if you're filling in the shift, you're going to, you're going to be there at shift change?
Yes.
And stay for the full shift?
No, this is call. So, the call could turn into a, couldn't it? No?
It would, it would not.
So, would be one rate of pay for that day?
Correct.
You wouldn't have a split?
No, no, never, never.
Split pay?
Nope.
But you could potentially have two, two different pay rates for the week?
You could, if you took a full-time shift and.
Just so I can understand it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it is up to the chiefs to submit the payroll that way.
I'm just thinking of the nightmare that the finance committee may, finance department may have trying to process all this stuff.
Yeah, well, I got to tell you, in the past, we would pay people a different rate if they had all the credentials, whether they responded as a medic or responded as a firefighter. Same person would get a different rate.
Right.
So, there was, we've been eliminated that complexity.
Well, I remember that conversation before, that's what made me start thinking about it again.
And we have call firefighters that never pick up scheduled shifts, so it's not going to be a big deal, but we'll have a few employees that do both. Usually, they're on one side or the other consistently.
Anybody else have anything for, either one of the chiefs on this? Thank you.
What would you like to say?
Strike working.
Yes.
And say, fill in.
Fill in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so why don't we just zip down these, because we can just go on number, just go right through all the numbers and make sure that nobody has any questions or comments on any of these, so then we can just approve the warrant as a whole. It's number one, finance committee report, which we don't have that, so there's nothing to talk about on that. Number two is the budget, which Matt just went over. Anybody have any questions on that?
Yes.
Tim?
No, I think.
Number three, salaries are elected officials, board of assessors, Blackstone Valley School District rep moderator, board of selectmen, clerk, including stipends and water and sewer commission. Questions on that? Number four, Blackstone Valley Regional School District fiscal year '25 budget. Any questions on that? If nobody stops me, I want to keep going. So, number five is the fiscal year '25 transfer station enterprise fund.
Just a general question, Matt. Are we, are we looking at income versus expenses there?
We're on target for the, you're talking about the transfer station permits, we're on target. Yeah.
Thank you.
We did put a transfer from retained earnings in here, just out of caution, but we did meet the target last year, and we are scuttled to meet it again. The big question mark is where the BP trucking contract comes in, and that's the one-year contract that we're currently in, and we'll enter into a new contract in FY '25. Kristin did reach out to our current vendor, and we see estimates, so you'll see that went up a little bit.
Good.
Yeah.
Article six, fiscal year '25 water sewer enterprise fund. You have salaries, expenses, capital, and debt. Article seven is fiscal year.
It's a small typo there. Need a dollar sign in front of three, five, six, six, five. Sorry.
No, it's okay. Article seven, fiscal year '25 peg, what's peg?
Cable fee.
Well, I see.
Public education and government.
Yeah, I just didn't know it, the three, access and cable receipts reserved for appropriation. Salaries and wages and expenses, any questions on that? Article eight, we have reoccurring business. I'm not going to read the entire thing. Does anybody have any questions on article eight? I'd have to call Ellie and Trillian here, we do have a couple educators in the room that maybe they could help, but. No questions on that? Article nine, personnel bylaw classification and update. Anything we need to know about that, Mr. Administrator?
It reflects a 2% core. I believe in the past, under, didn't we put the job titles under the charts and what grade they were in?
Gene, can you confirm that? Job titles under.
We did have job titles in, above the chart, okay.
We did have it, is that something we want to put back in there?
Yeah, because I, I think, a taxpayer may ask, what rate does that person, that job pay?
Right, yeah.
Obviously, this is a chart, we don't have everybody, anyone in every one of these cells, which is there for math.
Article 10, adoption of the revised fiscal year '25 through '29 capital improvement plan.
Chairman Gene has some comment, would you like to come up, Gene?
Yeah.
Speaking from the bleachers, come on.
Are you on the last one or on this one?
Article 10.
She's out of the bathroom, you know, in the desert, hawling.
No, she just wants to be near the door so she can run.
I just noticed, and the chairman could adjust, I just want to add, eat all associated costs to each line item on capital, on the capital. So, under article 10, for the current FY '25, it is on the first line, but it's not on the rest.
So, each line item should show and associated costs?
Yeah.
Could we do that edit?
We'll fix that.
The Latin phrase is, vox clamantis in deserto, a voice of one crying in the wilderness. And the IT director, Dave Van Agley, and I had the same Latin teacher come on high school, and that sign was under the intercom that made the announcements, a voice of one crying in the wilderness.
Say, you're smarter than I, took Latin. I may get vino veritas. The only thing I remembered.
Sobrosa, sobrosa in vino veritas, right, under the roof.
Article 11 and article 12 were the two firefighters and police union contracts we just voted on.
I have to make edits on those, I noticed earlier when I was looking. I had them combined at first, and then I separated them to.
Article 13 is amend the general bylaws for the wetland. Article eight of the wetland bylaw, section 13, is the citizens petition. Article 14 is the amend the zoning bylaw, the solar bylaw. This, I believe, is the one that we passed over on all-town meeting. Article 15 is to transfer land ownership of map parcel 118-2, Caswell Court.
I'm just going to caution the board, I know that this will go on the warrant, but this may be subject to considerable conversation. So, I'll do the best I can to gather the information you need as a board, but this land is under your control now via taxing. And the point of the article is to transfer it to conservation. So, there's upside and downside to that, and I know that there's at least one member of the finance committee who has reservations about making the transfer. So, there will be some conversation that town meeting.
Please, please provide the ammunition.
Ammunition, medicine, whatever it is, I will do the best I can to supply you with information.
All right, hold on for, is that the end of the, oh, no, article 16, the storm order bylaw.
Mr. Benoit did send me the amended amount for that, but it's the most current, with the $300.
Yeah.
Section 11.
So, this, you have the correct, this isn't right?
This is correct, the one that you're looking at is correct.
No, so, the under 11, the wording's still in there, it says not more than 300 per day, you have to be specific on that number?
I think that's what they suggested.
That's what we went through with the conservation and the zoning. It has to be, it has, it can't be not more, it has to be, you have to pick a number. So, limits are 300, so it can't, the fine will be $300 per day. Okay?
Okay, I'll check with those.
Yeah.
Well, we, did we get the may messed up there, too?
Is it on the same one?
You don't charge 300, shall be punished, or may, no, the. Or is that the intent of the bylaws, to charge everyone who's run afoul $300 bucks?
No, it's up to, it's up to the discretion of the board that it's in front of. Zoning has the ability to charge up to $300 a day if they choose to impose the fine. Observation and experience has shown that there's a lot of discretion used in that, that people aren't just jumping to charge people $200 a day, you have to be resistant in trying to comply in order to get that imposed.
Might be moot for tonight's discussion, but, you know, as a petitioned article, we really don't have to do much by way of debate here, but unless, I'm misreading this, this will say, any person who violates any provision of this bylaw, order, or permit issued thereunder shall be punished by a fine of not more than 300 a day. I know the not more part, but is the shall a problem?
Again, I think it's up to the discretion of the governing board that they determine whether or not, yeah, they warrant that violation. You can get warnings prior to getting violations.
Well, then you wouldn't use the word shall, you may use may. I'm pretty sure they had suggested that at the last meeting, yeah.
About changing it from shall to may?
Yeah. Yeah. But that's the petitioners.
Right.
We really don't have a right to change any of it.
No, this is a town that came out of.
This came out of community development.
Community development.
Petitioners want to change, but this is article, storm water management. Yeah, all right. So, which one's the petition?
That's the one that we did the two amendments on, Lisa, do you remember that? Is this the article that we did the two amendments on? It was $300 a day, was the other part of it, may.
Yeah, I'm going to check the last document that's sent after the last meeting.
But this is storm water. Citizens' petition is wetlands protection.
Well, we, yeah, we didn't do anything with that, because she has to amend that on the floor, we have no say in that at all.
Correct.
Yep, yep. And then Benoit came in after that, and we changed that to the $300, has to be a fixed fee, and it can't exceed 300. And I don't have a problem with that, saying may is not a shall, so.
I'll follow up with that, Cooper, to make sure I have the correct document reported.
He did, I believe, that Mr. Benoit received something from town council on that.
But this you can change, I'm, without the benefit of council present, we can only do the best we can with what we know, and my recommendation to you would be to change the shall to may. May be punished by a fine of, and then strike not more than. So, may be punished by a fine of $300 per day. I think that captures the consistency that was desired with wetland, and leaves a discretion in the hands of the current county.
Right. And it eliminates the confusion that, if somebody reads it, it says. And it eliminates the confusion that, somebody reads it, it just says we have to fine him $300 a day, so, and that's a valid point that Tim brings up.
Discretion.
I will check that edit. I know, I have a feeling he's done.
But we have the, no, we have the ability to change that, so just amend it to that.
Okay.
If everybody agrees to that, do you want to take a vote on that? We're going to do two amendments.
You said you'd fine, you probably should have taken-
Somebody make a motion to do the two amendments, to change the word to, from "shall" to "may", and to put a fixed amount of $300 per day for the fines.
So moved. Second.
You came pretty good at that.
Wow.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just waiting.
This coffee kicked in. All in favor? Thank you, Lisa. Article 17, Douglas Public Schools District-wide Facility Study. We have in attendance the superintendent and the business agent for the school. Do anybody have any questions for either one of them? We can invite them up if you do. I think they pretty much summarized what their thoughts were at the last meeting. I would like to take a little more time, even if it went to the Fall Town meeting, take a little more time to explore this. Just haven't had enough time to digest it, if it makes sense. It's a lot of money to spend, could potentially pay for, potentially a petition, position, or where there's, I don't know, I think there's need to be a little more conversation on this. But if somebody wants to make a motion to keep it on there, I'm perfectly fine with that as well. What's the desires of you guys?
I'm open for further discussion on that topic.
I'm going to invite, the superintendent had made a motion, the, I don't think it's a dead discussion, but I think that it just needs a, just to be a little more information on it, just so we fully understand what it is. When I looked through the report the last time, it identified different things, but I didn't see a solution, and so that, that's what I would be looking for, to fully understand what the report was, and the business agent has explained that you can format it any which way you want, and what that cost would represent. Any thoughts from you guys?
I would like to, I would like to take more time on that subject.
Paul and Courtney, when your school year ends, you're not around during the summer, correct?
We're here all summer.
Oh, you're, no, I don't know, I don't know.
We're here all summer. Mine's vacation days, we're here.
Yeah.
And it's just a possible thought, but if it's something that we could somehow get together, whether it's with the four of you guys, Gene, Matt, and you two, to try to hash this out so we have better information, so we can help support it or not support it, whatever the case may be. I just don't have enough to go on myself, that's, that's the struggling part that I have. And I know I caved earlier on a previous agenda item, but the importance of the salaries and that, I just had to pick my battles, and that wasn't one that I wanted to jump on. This one here, I think we, as a collective group, we can come, all come up with a pretty good plan as to how to make this work, whether it's a study or whatever it turns out to be. I don't know how you guys feel about it, if you have any input to it, or whatever, we're more than welcome to, happy to hear you. Comments or concerns?
Courtney and I have been here, I think, 34 meetings now, so you know our position. We know it's a big ask for the town, but if you don't ask, you never know, correct?
So- No, it gets the wheel, it gets the ball in motion.
It gets the ball rolling, and we would be remiss if we didn't, we know that we have close to 300,000 square feet of building space. We have four buildings aging from, you know, 10 years old to 45-plus years old. We need experts to come in who know HVAC, who know mechanical engineering, who know structural engineering, who are architects, who can come in and look at our entire facility with the expertise of this is what they do for a living, and help us and help the town generate a five, 10-year capital plan. What it looks like, obviously, when we go out to bid, we can lay the specifics out for it, but we wanted to get the conversation started. We hope to use it here, but if the Board of Selectmen wishes to postpone this, continue the discussion, and look for it at the Fall Town meeting, obviously, we welcome entertaining that too, but we needed to start the conversation, and we know that internally, it's not something that we could fund a study of that magnitude on our own.
Yep, and I think it's a good conversation to start, and it'll be meaningful at the end of the day. Just not having enough time to jump into it is the toughest part, but it's a start, right?
Correct.
I've started a bunch of conversations since I've been around, and some of them are still ongoing, but whatever.
And as Ms. Keegan said, the plug for doing it townwide as well, not just incorporating the schools, but, you know, there are a lot of buildings on the municipal side to, again, assist capital in putting together a long-range plan.
Right, and from, and I hate the term "townside," but I'm going to use it anyways, so, the other buildings other than yours, we're looking for guidance from the administrator to help us with what the conditions are, whether they're occupied or unoccupied, as he alluded to earlier. And so I want to see how that fits into what you're suggesting, so.
As long as we can continue the dialogue.
Oh, no, absolutely. It's just a hard, hard thing to do with the 11th hour, and try to do with some of this stuff, so. I guess we keep going with it, oh, I don't know where these guys are going to go with it, I'm not, they have to tell me what they want to do.
Mr. Wojcicki alluded to being a magician, I think today I can read minds, so I think I know where we're going with this. Well, that's my only trick for today. I like that analogy, it was a good one, I've used it a couple times, so I thank you.
No, but if nothing-
I may be credited once or twice.
If nothing else, I would encourage the conversation and the teamwork in order to get to where we got to get on all this stuff, so, I just think it might be a little premature.
And thank you for at least considering it and hopeful to continue the discussion, but like you said, if you don't ask, you never know.
I'll keep hounding Matt and asking him if he's, if he's started the conversations. I bother him with enough other things, I guess I can bother him with that too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next article is the BBT Roof Reconstruction Replacement Rooftop HVAC. Did we make any headway on that?
Yeah, see how long it is? So, as previously mentioned, there are any number of municipalities that have raised concerns about the manner in which Dr. Fitzpatrick has constructed his request for this repair. And it's not because we're opposed to the repair, not. The school needs a roof, it needs a roof, it needs HVAC units, and they want to apply for this accelerated repair program and MSBA, so be it. However, most of, or not, shouldn't say most, that would be incorrect, but many municipalities are beginning to have some concerns about the rate of growth in the BBT budget and spending overall in general, and would prefer to see this capital expenditure voted as an excluded debt at, by their town meeting, and not put into their budget to be paid out of operating funds. For us, it's whatever, $60,000.
$61,000, I think it is.
So, I would prefer not to have $60,000 in my operating budget, that takes away a brand-new police officer right there, or three, three other dirt planes.
Or 90% of a cruiser.
Or 90%, yeah, most of a cruiser, right, the dry train. So, that's why a number of us wanted to put this together with an exclusion format. The other thing that we wanted to be contingent upon was MSBA approval of his project. So, we would only be providing the funds he needs to do his project, including if it's supported by an MSBA accelerated repair program grant. So, we're going to raise and appropriate as a group $10 million, hand it over to BBT, and then have him come back and say, "Well, I got my 50% that I asked for, and so it's only going to be $5 million from the towns," and have to go through this whole rigmarole of whether or not we'll get our $5 million back, or just leave it there, or whatever. Whatever process inertia would tend to favor, and that's what, inertia is our enemy when we're trying to be fiscally responsible. No, we're only going to give you the money you need to do the exact project that you say you're going to do. All of that translates into all of this legal gobbledygook. The town of Upton brought this to their council and had counsel from KP Law, which is the most commonly retained municipal law firm. It's not ours, we have KP for Labor Council, but not for General if rich. But KP's all over the map with clients, and this was the language they came up with. And they edited it somewhat, so it looks like Upton, Northridge, Milbury, possibly Douglas, if you guys vote this language, are all going to be voting the exact same language, which is that we will raise and appropriate these funds from our taxpayers' contingent upon MSBA approval of the project, and contingent upon a ballot vote of the voters to exclude the debt. That's a complicated warrant article, it's a complicated motion, it's going to take a long time to read, but that fundamentally, what we're trying to do is preserve the integrity of our operating budgets and hold BBT accountable to a specific funding plan and approach to debt.
Who's going to make that motion?
Well, I don't think it's going to be Howard. That was an inside joke.
The BBT?
I would think our BBT rep should stand up and make this, right? He's elected from the town of Douglas, and this would be an appropriate thing for him to do. But I can assure you that we've been over this language over and over and over. I know that Unibank's bond counsel, and that's where we typically go for advice on the wording of bonded debt language, this highlighted section was confusing to her. Far be it from me to wade into a battle between practice and attorney, since I don't practice law, but it's a lawyer on each side of the conversation, so pick one. I'm going to pick KP on this one, I think that they have the appropriate level of experience across the Commonwealth dealing with this issue, and I just don't think they're wrong. So, it may not be the cleanest drafting, but it does get the point across that the town will only support the amount in excess of what is funded by the MSBA, and will only fund that amount through a debt exclusion.
That little highlighted section seems like it's provided the town's approval of the borrowing is contingent upon the district's ability to secure a grant, so if the grant isn't secured, the approval of the borrowing of funds-
Is moot.
Right.
Out the door.
Which that wasn't in there on the first go-round.
Correct. Well-
Oh, got you.
This was not Unibank that reviewed this article, this was Bond Counsel, which issues the bonds. So, you know, I would encourage Matt, I don't want to speak for her, because there was a lot of language she was using today, I think more, more, you know, she was talking about deadlines, and if it doesn't meet a deadline, it's automatically accepted, so there's a lot to that shaded area-
A lot of language.
-that I would like Matt to follow up with her to make sure, you know, if the board's comfortable just, you know, giving him authorization to either remove that shaded area or keeping it in. She thinks it may cause confusion, especially because it's redundant of the actions taken on March 14th. So, I don't want to just take P, you know, and she says KP Law is a great, but they don't specialize in this. So, I would rather have Matt have that conversation with Bond Counsel, and then, I don't know if you guys can give them authorization, him authorization to either remove her, you know, keep it inserted based on that conversation. I don't want something to happen to the article because of language, especially, like I said, she's, this is Bond Counsel that's responding, it's not just Unibank.
Yeah, but that to me is not what I'm talking about. I don't really care. If we got that opinion through Unibank through email chain, it doesn't matter to me. Just to be clear, what I said, I've taken a side. So, fine, I can go back and ask more questions, but, so that everyone in the room understands. I read it, I understand it for myself. It has been drafted by a professional attorney that works in municipal law, and I said I'm picking a side, so, I would urge you to vote language. Now, if it needs to be amended, it could be amended on the floor if something comes up, but at this point, the last thing I want to do is play a game of telephone and be the guy in between an attorney from KP Law and Bond Counsel. I would rather have dental work without anesthesia for hours than participate in that conversation. If somebody doesn't get it, they should talk to each other and fix it, and I will facilitate that conversation, but I'm not going to go back and ask Bond, I don't even know enough about it to do anything other than interpret the plain language of what's written in front of me, and I think this is perfectly clear, it doesn't confuse me at all. I know what we're trying to do, and I know that this language accomplishes it, so I'm not worried about confusion at all. If you're going to miss dates, that's a completely different question, it has nothing to do with this wording. It has to do with the trigger for a ballot vote must occur within X number of days after town meeting votes to exclude the debt. You don't have forever, you have to have that election before the fall. So, basically, what you're looking at is if it doesn't make it on the springtown election ballot, you would have a special election for the BBT debt. Yeah, I know, on all the fun and expense, and you might get a couple hundred people tops to vote for that. And that frankly is not our problem, that's Dr. Fitzpatrick's problem. He's the one that got the ball rolling, he wanted this done now, and I don't think he thought through the calendar, because every time he's been in front of a public meeting and asked about, "Doesn't this cause a logjam with our elections?" He hasn't had an answer for it, so.
So, in the middle of this thing, thanks for both of you making me read this again. After, it says, the word "project" is in parentheses, right, so, "which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school preserve," and all that nonsense. And then you get to the, "otherwise is capable of supporting the required education program, and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority," right? "Set amount is to be expended at the direction of the, of the Blackstone Valley School Committee," right? So, they get to say what it is. I still have the same question that I had the other day, Matt, when I was talking to you, and I don't remember if, I think it was at the last meeting actually I brought up. That $10 million, is that the gross amount of the job?
Yeah.
Okay. This, so this thing tells me that they have to be, have the ability to secure the grant. Where in this does it tell me that that $10 million gets reduced by the price of the, by the value of the grant?
So, it's halfway down, there's a phrase that begins "and any," if you look on the left-hand side of it.
"And any project cost in district occurs in excess of any-"
"In excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility- In excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities.
So that's a legal way of saying that that, the MSBA grant is supplementing the ten million dollars? Okay. Sometimes you got to simplify it from people like me, that's all. I just need to make sure that, that reading through this and that it's not in excess of the ten million. Back to the other problem before it was actually put in there, that if they got a grant, where's it go? Okay.
Is it any old grant, or is it a grant with meaningful?
It's the accelerated repair program grant. So there's accelerated process for, so this shaded language, so that we all understand. The shaded language says, provided that the town's approval of the borrowing is contingent upon the district's ability to secure the grant approval from the MSBA. So. That language would operate to say that if BBT does not get an MSBA grant, then our approval goes out the window. We will not raise ten million. We, the thirteen communities that are in the catch. So basically, the way this is worded now is the member communities will only raise excluded debt sufficient to pay the portion of the roof project that is not paid for by MSBA.
Anybody else having questions on this?
Read this three times.
Yeah, right.
Where's the accelerated, where's the?
They haven't gone into that level of detail, but they're applying right now. Under that, that's the grant program they're applying under.
Shouldn't that be stated here? Because they can do a study and.
But they could also do an MS, they could do a regular MSBA application. When he's been here, when Dr. Fitzpatrick's been here, that's what he's emphasized. That's what he's trying to acquire.
So there's no, there's not a smaller grant that he could say, look, I got the grant for a hundred thousand to study what color we should do the roof. You guys are on the hook for ten grant, ten mil.
No, my understanding, what he explained it is that there is a regular MSBA major repair program that this may or may not be eligible for. And then there is this accelerated repair program, which the MSBA has had from time to time, but not every year. And that is the program he is trying to get this work done. It is actually mostly HVAC out of it. And he's trying to get these accelerated process for consideration of his application, because it is not a full-blown, major architectural project. He's replacing a roof and replacing some rooftop units. There's always drawings, but it's not a major new.
So either one of you correct me if I'm wrong. The, the ten million dollars, the Douglas's share would, on the full value of the ten million minus any grant, subtractions in there would be about sixty-one thousand a year.
I think it was sixty-one if it's ten million.
Correct. Yep.
So it'll be substantially less if.
And I'm only bringing that up because we keep saying ten million in, in everybody's life, ten million is a lot of money, right? So in, in the scope of our overall budget, sixty-one thousand is a lot of money to us, but it's not a lot of money in, in general. I think we're getting hung up on a lot of this, and we can probably move forward on it. Anybody else have any questions on Article eighteen?
Interest rates being what they are, I wonder, can we absorb this and just not go through that and ride the wave?
I don't even know how he's rating for interest, but I, I'm not even sure how the, a bond rating agency looks at a regional vote text school and rates their credit. Not sure I understand fully. I should think that they would have a very high rating, because all they really need to do is come in here, put an invoice on the table, and we have to pay it. They don't have a choice. If the other towns vote the budget, we have to vote his budget. If the other towns vote for this and we don't, he's still going to get a project, and we have to pay it.
Well, we're probably all the cosigners, so they should have a good rating. The, real quick, Gene, that memo, that email that you showed me from, that Howard had sent over, and he got his response, did that show any interest rates on that? Do you remember?
Oh, I don't recall.
No.
He had put the estimate on there, but it is going to, you know, depending on when they go to borrow.
I think there's going to end up being a lot of discussion on this, and there could potentially be any amendments on the floor to, to handle concerns by anybody, whether it's.
It could be a year before he goes out. So the Fed did not reduce rates in its most recent meeting, but it still says it plans on reducing rates. I forget what they said, three quarters of a point, something like that this year, on the Federal Reserve rate. So that could have any number of reverberations in the market and change. But our share is whatever, eight or nine percent.
Nine point six.
Yeah. Funny, I think you remember.
It's a number. It's a number.
Nine point six.
You give me the piece of paper, I read it, right, Gene? There's a story behind every number.
There's a story behind every number, that nine point six is.
And I'm going to credit Gene with that statement. Okay, so if nobody else has anything on our rooftop unit, I know you're trying to spend my entire birthday with me, but I'm going to move on to nineteen.
Just, just a real quick hit. You said that be a BBT agent of, of speaking on this article at the meeting, at the.
Yeah, we have a representative in the town, correct?
Well, I think this is note to us. We have to reach out to him and tell him he's on the hook. A Douglas resident, elected to represent the town of Douglas on the BBT school committee, it's, it's up to him to stand up.
I think otherwise, like you say, there's probably going to be quite a few questions, and they're going to be, who's going to answer these?
Yeah, I had made a request.
I'm sure the superintendent will be here.
Right.
He always does come to our town meeting.
I had made a request at least to, to reach out to different proponents for these things, so we have our speakers, so we're not going through the process that we typically go through. Number nineteen, town-owned land in Uxbridge, that's that little sliver that Mr. Monerick came in with. Anybody have any questions on that?
There's actually two parcels there, right?
Yeah.
Should we keep the road running? The little, the little pie piece?
The tiny little triangle?
It may help with an entrance.
People would do that, you know?
Just saying. Put up a toll.
Not big enough for a rotary, so you're not getting.
I believe the statute allows the chief procurement officer to conduct the sale of this real estate in an auction fashion, which I can tell you is what I would do to prevent any person of ill will from trying to mess around with this really, use this piece of land that is necessary to clean up the map from trying to interject themselves and get some free money out of. Let the people who really want to buy the thing have the opportunity to bid.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our annual town meeting warrant. So we have two edits on Article twelve, and we are removing.
Twenty and twenty-one to go over to underneath the map.
They got nineteen, twenty, and twenty, so twenty and twenty.
Somebody woke him up again. Sorry about that, guys. I was trying to get out.
Happy birthday, Mike.
All right, so number twenty, easement for seventy-five northwest Main Street.
Problem drainage area. The landowner is offering the town an easement to pipe the water away. Town recommends adoption.
We did have a little map on our last meeting, so.
Yeah. One more.
I, I know, yeah. Twenty-one, municipal separate stormwater, storm sewer system compliance, year seven funding.
As funding for our ongoing compliance efforts for our existing stormwater and sewer management systems run by the water and wastewater system, as well as the town and its slogan.
Anybody have any questions on any of this stuff? If not, so do, so we can close this warrant. We have two edits on Article twelve, the word may instead of shall, and the fixed amount of three hundred. What's that?
It's Article sixteen.
Article sixteen? I marked the wrong one. Article sixteen, the word may, and the fixed amount of three hundred. In Article seventeen, we will remove that from the warrant for future discussion. Does anybody have any questions on that? Entertainer motion to approve the annual town meeting warrant.
All motion to approve the annual town meeting warrant?
Or close it?
Close it.
Close it? Close it or approve it? Close it.
All motion to close the annual town meeting warrant?
You didn't pay attention. We'll second that.
Have a motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. That moves us on to our special town meeting warrant, which is, and it has a sign on here also. Any of you to sign this before we leave?
The special town meeting warrant.
Yeah.
It's in the office, ready to be signed.
Yeah.
We closed it last meeting.
We closed it all, ready? We just need to sign it? Okay.
Do we need the motion to second it?
So we'll just make, just go through it, and she has possible votes. So just put through a motion to sign the annual and the special town meeting warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number six, move five, seven, twenty-four meeting to five, six prior to the town meeting. Anybody opposed to that?
I'll make a motion that we move our meeting from five, seven, twenty-four to five, six, twenty-four.
Motion's been made, and do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
So. What's that?
Six thirty start.
Six thirty?
Yeah.
Okay. Number seven is meeting minutes, which I overlooked and accused the, at least, sort of not having for us at the last meeting, so I'll accept responsibility for that. So if we can go through the meeting minutes. So we have, the first one is the Tuesday, February sixth, meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes.
Caught a typo. Matt's last name. Paragraph. Line one, two, three, four, five, line five. There's an E on the end of his name.
Whoa.
You spelled Matt's name wrong?
Turned me into a plural.
That's never happened. That's never happened.
That's a, that's a French bollock.
You put an accent over it. What you kidding?
I'm sure it was the way that was pronounced, not the minute take, is fault. Did you see the executive meeting minutes of August first, Matt?
Is Rich saying we should retain that?
Rich advised partial release on our, with our judgment. If things are still ongoing, they cannot be released.
Eleven B.
On August first.
Right, if it, it's still ongoing, so we would not.
We would just retain all of the incidents.
We can, if it's.
Yeah.
That'd be safest thing, it'd be less confusing to try to redact things and all that stuff.
Yeah, and I think, you know, well, I don't want to get into it, but talking about the minutes, but I agree with Rich's advice to retain that particular.
Okay. February sixth, entertain a motion to approve those. Have everybody done with them?
If everybody's done, I'll make a motion to accept order selectman Tuesday, February sixth, twenty twenty-four, meeting minutes.
As amended?
As amended. Spell correct.
The other one that found it.
I did.
Motion's been made.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, meeting minutes.
Make a motion, have we approved February twentieth, open session meeting minutes?
I will second that.
You good?
Yep.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The, what I had just walked over with was this next set of executive session meeting minutes of August first, twenty twenty-three. Under advisement of town council, we will be retaining these after we get to the point where we vote on them.
Make a motion that we approve both the August one and the August fifteen executive session minutes, retaining all.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have any questions on the, I have to have this kept on our agenda, just so we have it in front of us, so we don't lose sight of them. The, it's just an update on our goals. Anybody have any questions? I also requested that we only have the town administrators, where the other ones more or less pertain to his authority and supervision. It did give us an outline of how he looks at it, but it's not something that I think we get involved in from a day-to-day thing.
So just by way of, quickly, talking about a couple of things that are very much in progress. My focus is on bullet point number four, the commitment of our ARPA funds by December twenty twenty-four. We're using those funds for a number of projects that are complex, and the school security system, the CCTV in particular, is winding down, so I am proceeding with a goal of having the bid packages opened on May fifteenth. So that means our design work needs to be done by about the third week of April.
so that the design can be circulated to the qualified bidders. Just by way of reminding people, there was a mandatory walkthrough. Only those bidders that went on the walkthrough and went through the schools and interviewed school officials about what their hopes were for the system would be allowed to bid. And we're not going to take some low bidder who didn't even put in the effort to do that homework is just not going to make it. Subsequently, we found that the design was flawed and that it was necessary to hire a design outfit to improve our design so that it was a credible document against which a responsible bidder could make a good bid. They knew exactly what was being put out and would get offer a price. This is even more stratified, you know, thinner air than bond council conversations. I'm not a security expert. I don't pretend to be one. They have a lot of specialized systems. They have a very specific way of delivering alphabet soup when they discuss things. Everything's an acronym. If you don't know the acronyms, you can't keep up. So we've made everybody slow down and explained exactly what it is they want to do. The good news is there are things that we're doing in our schools right now that are efficient, cost efficient, and effective in terms of providing security. We may need to upgrade some of those things and improve our license. And then a couple of buildings, we really need to bite the bullet and probably spend quite a lot of money to improve our system. It's not just a matter of going to Radio Shack and getting a plug-and-play camera and say, okay, this will work as long as there's an image being transmitted back to a server, we're all set. Doesn't really work that way. They need to be compatible with each other. They need to be compatible with other, other systems that we have, and then we have to take that data and send it to somebody who cares about it in a format that they're going to care about. So rather than having a screen with a thousand camera feeds on it, what is it that prioritizes that one feed that you need to pay attention to right now? And so that's what the design work that we're doing is, is going to complete. The only phase we are going to do with the ARPA funds will be cameras. So we're not going to be doing the integration of other systems, so door access or enunciators or anything else, that is a phase for the future. And we have identified a grant opportunity that may be an eighty-twenty split. So the town may have to raise twenty percent, but the rest of it could be grant funds through federal government. That is currently our work plan. So we will make the initial investment, get everything on the same page with the compatible technology, then apply for a grant to put another layer of security over the top of that so those systems actually start to talk to each other and use other people's money to fund that. That is currently the goal of that. I'm waiting for some estimates from Mr. Sullivan on the other ARPA projects, notably running water up Depot Street, or actually replacing old lines on Depot Street. One goal that is going to slip, we had originally hoped that the highway department facility would be ready for town meeting vote, annual town meeting in May. That is not going to be a goal that we can meet, that it's going to be a November goal. We're still going to have to hustle to get to November, but a lot of work's being done behind the scenes. Let me explain the situation this way. A lot of times, private sector folks criticize or poke fun at municipal government or state of any level of government for not asking all the right questions and not really peeling back the layers to understand why something costs what it costs. And a lot of times, major corporations or industry groups take advantage of us because we don't ask those questions. So why were we paying so much money for streetlights eight years ago in municipalities? Because municipalities would get a bill and pay it. That's what you do, right? You get an electricity bill, you pay it. And after a while, somebody, Public Works Director in Lexington, to be precise, figured out that the electric company was loading all of its overhead into municipal streetlight accounts. And that the actual cost of those lights was a tiny fraction of what the municipalities were paying. So most of us who were paying attention converted municipal streetlights to municipal ownership and converted them to LED fixtures. And we now pay not even thirty percent of what we were paying to light the streets. The same thing seems to be going on with public building construction. This has been controversial for the better part of all the decades I've been involved in government. Public Building Authority and Rhode Island got themselves in all kinds of trouble. It's actually kind of funny, but it also happened in Massachusetts with a major UMass project. Why does it cost X millions of dollars to build a public facility? And why have these costs risen so precipitously over the last few years? And some of it is purely the industry being set up the way it is. It's been so recent and so extreme that you can't miss it. As a taxpayer in the town of Westport, I voted yes on a new police station. The police station, if you look at the thing, has gables all over the place and cedar, shingles, and big beautiful windows, and the whole thing costs nine million bucks. So now, four years later, five years later, if you want to build a fairly simple highway building and the numbers come in two, three times higher than a police station, something has changed in the industry that requires deeper investigation. So with Selectman Fitzpatrick's help, because he's in the industry, we've been exploring other possibilities. We think we can significantly reduce the cost of this project. So rather than rush an expensive bond to town meeting to simply get it done, we're going to take our time and make sure we get it done right. Because I think in the end, taxpayers are going to get a much better deal on basically the same building. I don't think it's going to change much. So no offense to our friends in the architecture trade, but there's just so many layers of markups and fees. When you start peeling it all back and say, we don't, I don't want to do that. We don't want to pay for all that. So that's it for the goals. I mean, I think as you go through some of these others, we have completed all of our contracts. This was a very busy contractual year. And the other thing that I'm aspiring to spend some time on is the, under the operations rubric, the third bullet from the bottom, department staff, provided with goals and evaluations in a complete timely professional manner. And evaluations are in place to support a requested personnel budget. It didn't happen exactly for this year, but what I'm doing is building the matrix that I will use for all the department heads. So what I'm envisioning recommending to the board is the operation as a whole, the town of Douglas Municipal Government will be evaluated by the town administrator based on an evaluation of department head performance. And that information will have two purposes. One, to set any merit-based compensation for department heads. And secondly, to inform the evaluation of the town administrator. So if the organization's performing poorly, there's no way the town administrator's doing a good job. If the organization's performing above expectations for everyone, there's no way the town administrator's doing a bad job. So there needs to be that checkpoint. What is it you want your government to do? You want it to be responsive, transparent, cost efficient, all of those. If all of those goals are being hit by the departments, then clearly the management has got its head screwed on straight. That needs to happen, not just for my time here, but for all time. It's been a professional goal mine as a town administrator to get these evaluation systems fairly set up so that people are evaluated on facts and on the merits of what goes on. And it just pushes politics and other things to the side. So I'm taking a lot of the metrics that we use to establish the different grades of manager, the level of responsibility, as well as the categories on my evaluation instrument. So fiscal management, risk management, all of those categories that you reviewed. Trying to marry those two things into a system that's going to add up to some totals. It also, I think lastly, to put this to bed, if we identify areas that are consistent, so across departments, maybe we're having a hard time communicating with the public responding to people in a timely way. That's a necessary, it goes back into the goals for the town administrator, right? So if we need to train people on how to interact with the public and get public inquiries answered in a timely and accurate way, then it is the responsibility of the town administrator and the select board to make sure that training occurs and that those standards are put in place and people are evaluated against them and they improve. It will, I think, contribute in the end to a high-performing organization, which is what we want to have. So there is, I'm sorry to put some effort against that. That will be the goal for the summer. Two quick notes. I'm going to just jump to my report and then I'll be done talking. Yep, just before you jump onto that, can you give us an update, maybe next meeting on the weekend, meeting after or whatever, where we stand with ARPA to make sure we're going to be able to obligate that money because we have to do that by the end of this town year? By the end of May on some of the projects on there. Right. If we can't do it. Just so we don't, just so we don't lose that funding. Yep. This Friday, town hall will be closed to the public. We are doing the cutover of the electrical supply from the street through the new generator and back into the building. So that's going to require us to take the whole building offline. The police department will function. The police department has a backup generator. It's small, it's old. But it'll do it. It's the little engine that could. It should get us through the day. Yep. And after that, it's going to be basically dismantled, taken away because it'll be replaced by the big one out front. It's got plenty of fuel in it. Plenty of fuel. Off and topped off, the oil's been channeled, pretty sure the water pump works, brand new, yeah, all that. But we're using this as an opportunity for training internally to, if it's going to take our entire network down, it obviously has to come back up. So our IT guys will be here, Lisa and I will be here to learn how to get the IT room back up to function in the case that it's knocked out. And just as a brief note, there will be a couple of days at the end of the month, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth, when I will be out of town and Chief Migliacca will be the interim town administrator while I'm out of town. I'll be taking my wife away for our. So that's when we get our new chairs and stuff? You get all your new chairs, new microphones, all different color paper clips, like any kind of color paper clip you want. But I just thought I'd put you on notice. I will be, and that being an anniversary trip, I'll be less likely to check you out. Nick will be here to hold the fort and then we'll get back to town. But I will be at that select board meeting. No, I won't.
Twenty-third.
Yeah, the twenty-third I will be. When is Keith coming in?
The twenty-third.
The twenty-third, okay. So we should be. And hopefully we identify all our speakers by then.
Yeah, we should be able to.
That's all I have. That's all you got. Okay. So under forty-eight hours, I just want to mention the, it may be a chance to review, to my surprise, that there is in existence a committee handbook, which I never knew about. And what brought this subject up is I started asking Lisa this morning about that two-hour rule on meetings, which we should have taken a vote four minutes ago. Yeah. But there's a two-hour rule that it's either two hours or ten, ten PM, whichever comes first. The board of committee should be voting to see if they want to extend the meeting. Conservation ran until one fifteen this morning, so I'm glad I'm not on conservation. But what I'm concerned about is us losing our volunteers. If you try to put that kind of pressure on them, you're going to, people are going to just drop off. So we have this committee handbook. I would like to at least review it. It's a little dated. Some of the stuff has to be updated in it. There's some information about procurement in there that the town administrator can update. I think the limits changed from ten thousand to fifty thousand. Maybe it hasn't. But if we can look at that at our next meeting, just give it a once-over and see. Lisa did email me a copy of that. She can email it to everybody so you can look at it ahead of time and they'll look through it and see if you have any thoughts on it.
Email? Why don't you scan it?
I actually have, I think the Word document.
No kidding?
Yeah.
The Word perfect?
Yeah.
It's on a floppy.
Word perfect. If you, if you choose to edit, just try to change your words to a different color so then Lisa can try to figure out what we're talking about. But I don't think there'll be, be a ton of change in there, but just updating the information. The other thing is we have a code of conduct for boards and committees, and that's where it actually says about the two-hour rule. It's on the second page. If we incorporate that into that committee handbook, we can put it right out to the table of contents. Then everybody has it. We distribute it to all the members. We're, we're changing people on all these boards and committees.
And that was updated and amended in the live twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yeah, twenty-two we did that. But you got, you got to turn over people on these boards. And nobody knows what the rules are, so maybe if we give everybody a copy of them and then as new members come in, we can give them, I think it would be helpful to those boards and committees.
Makes sense.
I will share those documents.
I did, there was an email that went around about the minute taker, from the minute taker. And for clarity, I had directed it to talk with Lisa Freeman, to guide her into doing these minutes in a little simplified format and get consistent. Everybody's got a different view of how they want the minutes and I could put a lot of pressure on the minute taker for no reason. So hopefully everybody pays attention to that and allows Lisa to guide, guide Stephanie through it or whoever the minute taker happens to be at that time. If they have any concerns or comments, they should direct them to Lisa so she can follow it. Stephanie, I try to intercept them.
Great job, then we'd love to.
No, she does a good job. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up because I don't want to lose the role of miscommunication. That's all I have. So if nobody else has anything else, we can adjourn.
Good. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.